Is a collection agency, of course, that specializes in municipal collections. They do a lot of stuff in school districts, a few municipalities of Delco, Chester County, Monmouth County, everything's comparable. One thing that we were able to negotiate with this particular company is that all of the advertising for informing the public of the change, they will incur that cost. The borough will won't have to incur that cost. But again, for council's consideration, this was something that I haven't talked about last year and it came back up this year. I would recommend that we go with e-collect to be the borough's new delinquent trash and store collection agency. They do have a transition plan that they will put in place so that not everything is seamless and they will work hand to hand with my office to ensure that, you know, nothing falls between cracks.
So could you please ask for the motion?
Well, I asked for a motion for council to consider to turn Lake Service Portonoff Law Firm as our current delinquent store and trash collector and appoint e-collect to replace them.
So, second.
Have it moved in properly, second. Any questions?
Yes, I have. Is there a cost saving?
The cost is, no, it's the same actually, counselor. One thing that will happen, the customer service is a little better, a whole lot better in my opinion, for the residents. One complaint that we constantly get here of our call is when you go to engage with Portonoff that they are overly aggressive and that they, I guess with the payment plans, they're not as flexible as other tax collectors are, as tax collector is more flexible and again, their customer service is better.
How does this affect people who are currently on a payment plan?
So in the transition, if they are currently on a payment plan with e-collect, they will stay with e-collect until, you know, they fulfill their obligation.
Does that mean e-collect or Portonoff?
I'm sorry, Portonoff. And I will, I will read this one thing that they said that they could, you know, the option that, and this just came today, I apologize, I may give that to everyone. They said, one thing that we've done, another municipality we found that offered a 30-day amnesty program where penalties interest are waived if you pay in full within 30 days has rendered very great collection rates and it allows us to swiftly move things over from the other tax collector. So that is something that they will call.
And will there be an online payment option, is that why they're e-collect?
Yes, they are, they do have an online payment option as well. Portonoff does not currently have an online.
Will we be moving so that online payment options for all of our collections?
We currently have an online option for our real estate taxes and we are in the process of building out something in the background for our permits and everything else. Counselor Rockwell, I do want to note for the record, we are, I argued the same thing about the time sheet piece, the time leave request forms, because we went live with paychecks in the fall and I could tell you the employees that report to me, they do use the app and they request electronically, but you know, some, we have to get everybody with the times.
And that starts at the top, management.
Right. Yes.
It shouldn't be a choice.
The people that report to me, yeah, the people that report to me, they don't, yeah.
And then, I know that you said that you got to leave the, I know the next vote, I'd like to know if you review these fees and you recommend them as well.
Oh, I do, yes.
Do I make the fees for the next, the, this that hasn't been mentioned yet, but I know this is the next one?
Oh, the fees for the hall rental?
It'll be the hall rental.
I did review these fees for the hall rental. I'll be quite honest with you, right now, we have great concerns with the hall rental, right now the borough's not profitable at all. I believe, this is my personal opinion, that people outside of the borough are coming and taking advantage of Borough Hall right now.
Okay, and then we also, and I would also like to propose that, you know, that council doesn't grab the use of the Borough Hall for their own personal needs, but, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question, Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
The tax problem that, you know, that has came up today, so that was a tax problem, tax issue that we had last year. And wasn't that the reason why we spent $10,000 hiring, well, given the $10,000 donation to the tax collector in Darby to train the other tax collector and to clean up all the prime mistakes dealing with the taxpayers that yours was that?
This particular one is a little different than that situation. That was related to real estate tax, this is totally related to store and trash.
Thank you.
I have a question, just for clarification, was it, was the number 450 errors or just 60 errors?
It was approximately 60 errors. 450 were turned over to them for delinquent taxes.
But the error, it was only 60 errors.
Correct, approximately.
Approximately, but not 450.
No.
450 were affected, they were sent to the, to the tax, to Portonoff Collection and they summarily sent letters warning residents that they were in default.
You said 450.
450 is the total list, yes ma'am, that was sent. Oh my goodness.
Yeah, 450.
Would you explain that again?
It was only 60 that were sent in error.
No, it wasn't, that is not true, that's not true.
Mr. Nichols, how many were sent in?
Was you one of the people that received the letter?
It should be 60, we should be.
Annually, what happens, what happens, December 31st is the cutoff date for anyone to completely pay their trash bill, their store bill, or their real estate. If you do not pay by the 31st, the tax collector prepares a delinquent report. One report goes to the county for real estate tax, the other two go to whoever in the borough decides that they want to collect their store and trash. The total amount that went over to the store and trash to Portonoff was 450. In that 450, there were approximately 60 errors in which there were corrections made and it was what we call strike off the list.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, it should have never happened. I also would like to, just for the benefit of the public who may not know, the tax collector is an elected position, so sometimes, you know, if someone is elected and they don't know how to, to manage that system, we needed to hire someone to supplement their services. So what Counselor Toomey Jones orders brought up was.
Yes, well, you shouldn't run for the office if you don't have the power.
I didn't, I was a tax collector, by the way, so what Counselor Toomey Jones orders is talking about.
Can you say my name still, thank you.
Is that when, you know, when the tax collector was having difficulty, you did have to supplement those services with someone to assist. There were serious illnesses and just not really knowing how to.
$10,000?
Not really understanding how to do the job, so in order for us to try to save our residents from.
And still errors.
Problem, four mistakes. I'm sorry, from the mistakes, we did hire someone to supplement those services.
It's not fair, it's not fair to talk about someone who's not there to mend those mistakes.
Okay.
Those same 60 residents, they are, they are in error.
Okay, Counselor, yes, Counselor Brooks has the floor, Counselor Brooks.
Okay, so, I would like to make a motion that we get our packets, packages, paperwork a week before, or at least three, four days before the meeting, because it's not fair that you can't go over everything and it's just a period of time, especially to the people that worked nine to five or not other.
Let me, let me just clarify.
I just asked, can we get it ahead of time?
Counselor, that has been the, Counselor, that has been.
I was up in their motion, they're going to take the vote.
Counselor, the workshop is two weeks before the meeting. These packets come to you right after the workshop. That's how they were set up in January, yes, and they're delivered at your house. Because the workshop was canceled, it was sent yesterday, we feverishly gathered together yesterday for today's meeting. That was, that was, it has not been that in five months. Okay, we don't need a motion for that, that's already, that's already the system.
So we're gonna have those?
You'll have, you'll have them two weeks ahead of time. Okay, alright, I'm sorry, two weeks. The first Monday is the workshop, first Monday is the workshop. After that workshop meeting and all of the reports from the highway department, from the code department, from the police department, those reports are submitted at that meeting. You get the, you get the packet right after that process, so that you have two weeks, the whole idea, the whole idea, but the whole idea.
As soon as it happened, Mr. Nichols, it could happen because.
We have to wait on the reports to connect.
Because all the bills don't come in that way.
He addressed that.
Not a day after before, this was because we canceled that meeting.
Should he cancel?
Okay, because that, that's why.
Because the bills don't need cancel.
Yeah, the, yeah, the, okay, alright, legislative consideration, under new business consideration for council to approve, the borough, you want to win all that, the Borough Hall rental?
Can I have it be recognized? Can I have it be recognized?
Yes.
We didn't say the vote on e-collect.
Oh, we did, if you want, it was second, all in favor?
I approve the vote.
Okay, is it unanimous?
I approve.
The vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
For e-collect, thank you, thank you, Counselor. We need to approve the minutes.
No, no, we're going to approve the overall.
You need to just.
Oh, are you gonna, was there some reservation about?
This is Mrs. Nichols, clear.
Is that okay? Okay, so the consideration with regards to the council to approve the updated Borough Hall rentals, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second.
I have a question, gentlemen.
So what, moved in properly, second, are there any questions?
So, why is it a different price for repasses?
Why there's? Two, both two. Because repasses don't require, repasses don't require the same type of use of the hall that, that traditional use of the hall does, except the last time we, recently, we did have a repass and I think we were a little snookered, but people came in, it was a repass, it was death in the family, but they end up starting with gospel music, after a little while it turned into the ethnic group. The ethnic group was African origin and their celebration was a little bit different, so we tightened up so it wouldn't happen again. We have our non-resi, we have our repass, residents are $1,000 and non-residents are $1,200 and you have to have a $500 deposit. You have to have the deposit because if we use public works to clean up the hall, that's time and a half on a Saturday and double time on a Sunday. So we try to schedule it on Friday and if it's on, people have to clean up, if they don't clean up, they don't get the deposit. If it's on a Saturday and they do not clean up, they do not get their deposit. We have a sheet that shows everything that needs to be done, how the Borough Hall looks before you rented it and how it looks after you're finished. If you don't adhere to any part of our contract, you do not get your deposit back. No one, not nonprofits, it used to be the nonprofits, put a deposit down and that was it, they got their money back. No one used the Borough Hall without paying. No one used the Borough Hall without paying. That's the difference between the former contract and this contract.
Okay, I have a, I'd like to point out that there's no definition of repass in here, so I feel like it's kind of lacking if we're not going to define different categories but not have what the definition is. So I get it that what we're expecting is a quick sit-down luncheon after a funeral and not a party, but if it's not defined here, then we don't have, we don't have any questions.
Yeah, I think the same, a single observation for the 501(c)(3)'s.
So I understand.
They're taken advantage.
So I understand like why, you know, there would be a reduced rate for repass because usually generals are, you know, unemployed, so I think that we need to, and it could be, you know, a hardship for, for people to come up with immediately to get their families together, but I think that we need to make sure we identify and have a special list if we're going to define what repasses is, because someone could say, you know, a year later that they're having a memorial service for someone to call it repass.
No, you can't.
But what I'm saying is that this stuff is defined, if someone, if someone says, you know, I'm having a repass because someone died, they signed a contract for that, and then they have a big memorial service or whatever, you know, we, I think that those things should be a little more clearly defined, you know, I'm okay with the actual fees, but I think the definitions need to exist.
I think, Madam Counselor, that we will make those adjustments and that was a great suggestion, are there others?
Can you tell me, how much, how much are the 501(c)(3)'s paid?
501(c)(3)'s are?
$500.
I think, I think that should be raised.
It does seem to be raised.
501, they pay $500 as a deposit and $500 to use the hall, that's $1,000. Traditionally nonprofits don't.
Oh, that doesn't look right.
Traditionally nonprofits don't have money and they depend on donations. The Borough Hall was never intended to make a profit. The purpose of the Borough Hall was for community use. Now we've turned it into a profit-making venture, just the way we talked about refurbishing the stage so we can have plays, just the way we talked about doing the floors over for the kids can have dances, that was the original intent of the auditorium. So I am more than willing to do what the council needs me to do. Any suggestions you'd like to have me make in the contract, I will do for definition purposes.
So the resident, non-resident, 501(c)(3) is?
Is $500.
So the non-resident would be?
That does delineate between a resident and non-resident nonprofit.
I know, yeah, you didn't put the non-resident, nonprofit, so how?
We don't have, we don't, we don't, we don't lease, we don't rent the Borough Hall to non, to res, who are not, we don't lease it to people who don't live in the borough, if you're a 501(c)(3).
So then it should identify that the nonprofit raises for residents, and does that mean that the resident has to live in the borough or that the nonprofit has to exist in the borough?
The nonprofit, whoever comes up to fill the application has to be a resident of the borough.
But do they have to own the nonprofit? What if the Red Cross wants to do a blood draw?
The Red Cross can't do a blood draw. It's a nonprofit, they're not residents.
How many, do they have to be?
Yes.
A gay resident has to come up to allow, to allow the Red Cross to have a blood draw?
Don't give me that.
They may not charge anything.
The Red, the Red Cross never had everything. They never, they're probably written out, so.
And I also, Ms. Brooks, the way you could do that is to ask for your limitations to take.
But wait a minute, I have another question before I do that.
No, I'm watching the table.
Where's, you stand there.
I'll check, because they're trying to rent it out this week. Like, you take them until the next month.
If we got the contract before, there's not. I just do this for the day.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so, just for some clarity, so, from my understanding, how it always was anyway, now you say non-resident, it is free, okay, the 501(c)(3) organizations were using the facilities for free, okay, so, my understanding was if they're having a party or something versus having some kind of community event, so having a community event, I thought was free, having some kind of party in the name of similar to a fundraiser or something like that, then they would charge this, so am I right or wrong?
I think that previous, I think that your question is, is correct. The problem that we're running into is that everything is going up, supplies to clean the borough, people to do this, people to do that, we have no way to recoup it, it's not, it's not free. Somebody has to clean the floor, somebody has to clean the restrooms, somebody has to do it, otherwise, I did it the other night, you, you can't have, we can't have free anymore because everything costs. Somebody asked me today, can we use it for seniors at, at a, at a place for seniors? They didn't ask me, they asked me indirectly, and I wanted to say yes until I determined who's going to pay for it, how are we going to clean it?
I have a legal question, so you said we don't rent the hall to 501(c)(3) outside 501(c)(3), I don't see how we can legally prohibit, I don't see how we can legally prohibit renting out to outside 501(c)(3), but yet still we rent to outside organizations and non-residents.
I'll ask Ms. Barnes to entertain that question, the question is.
You should just change the rate.
It's a matter of decision.
Yeah.
Do you want to change the length?
Change the rate.
We didn't agree.
Well, if this, this gets moved, I think, talking to President Harris, the, the person that's renting it next week is a private resident of Yaton that's doing a graduation. So if, if we wanted to, we could use this contract, this is not implicated in any, any way, that's what we all agreed Borough residents should pay, you said it was a reasonable fee, we can use that for them and then we can re-break this contract with all of council's input and I'll work with you, Isaac.
Thanks.
So is it actual graduation or is it graduation party?
It does, if a person wanted to rent it, if they're graduating, they get rented, it doesn't matter whether it's a party or a graduation.
So would that then be, be 17, 19, 5, or would be the 15?
It depends on what day and it depends on whether they're a resident or not.
Would it be?
Yes, there's no, unless council says, I, we came up this because we were losing money, if council decides that they want to mix it up for residents and for special groups, Red Cross, Blue Cross, whatever, it is your decision. This is because we're using the Borough Hall and we're losing money.
Okay, now. Can we can we do that?
Yes.
Yeah, we can, but it's, but it's. Back to what I said earlier, if all council was involved in this process, we would have been able to get through it much easier.
Well, they weren't. Well, nobody is.
Okay, we wanna, okay, excuse me, excuse me, we're gonna, we're gonna move on, I want to hear from the engineer.
It was a moment, please.
I want the engineer.
That was a vote.
She has to.
Oh, okay, all in favor, would you indicate by raising your hand?
So we, what is it that you're?
We're voting for.
What about the changes?
You said, so that they all make the changes.
They want to change.
We did this, we did all of this.
He's gonna coordinate with, with the council.
We have, we have four, we have four votes in the affirmative, we have five votes in affirmative.
I vote.
Thank you.
No, there are changes that need to be made.
Motion has been moved in.
The problem, yes. Motion parrot. All, motion parrot.
The state, they still, they still.
Okay, we have.
The engineer, yes, 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 oh, for the block party, you know, block party, Mr., Mr. Williams, I know, Mr. Williams, I just want to, Mr. Williams has circulated his petition of his block of Rockland and he wants to have a block party on 6/4/2022. So it's, 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 pardon me, yeah, he's a type of event, first birthday party.
With granddaughter.
For a granddaughter, little person, and.
I can help.
Can you please?
Yes, yes, Mr. Williams came up to the Borough Hall requesting a block party, I go around to this particular block between Longacre and, and Rockland, I spoke to our lieutenant and we agreed that we could use, it was okay to use that particular intersection, I relayed that information to Mr. Williams and I told him at this particular meeting, we would have a motion to hopefully approve his use of the block party. On his particular street, all the houses, it's not Longacre because the back of the houses face Rockland, there is no, there are no fronts on Rockland, the traffic is nicely controlled, although I did get a complaint today about speeding down Rockland, but in this particular case, it was discussed with the resident, I'm asking and Council President you're right on point in terms of making a motion, yes ma'am?
It says that permits are supposed to be submitted 30 days prior to the event.
Right.
Okay, okay, so we still gotta apply to the council.
Yes.
That was my only question. So normally these, our police department goes out and does an assessment of the area and let us know if they're able to handle with the streets being closed and everything and come back with a recommendation, so that council isn't deciding whether residents can or can't have events, it kind of, you know.
Is that the truth you tell the other?
So what I'm saying is that typically these, these come as a recommendation from that, that the council isn't approving or denying it, that the police department is letting us know, we encountered a similar situation with like handicap parking applications because they kind of, it gets a little muddy when you put, when you put everyone in the mix of deciding whether they can do this, this is a, this is a departmental issue, not, not necessarily a council issue, so this should have come as a recommendation to us, not just as, not for us to just come and vote this or whether somebody can't.
That's not necessarily so.
And then my other question would be, how many residents are in the block? Because on the, how many residents are in the block?
There's only three houses there.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second, are there any further discussions or questions?
So yes, is the, is the, the third house, is that actually Mr. Williams' house?
Mr. Williams' home is the very first house on the street.
Okay, so I would just ask that Mr. Williams add his name to the, to the petition, I'm just saying as a sign, because what it says here is 75% and two out of three is just 66%, so I just want to make sure that we can think above board, but I would see how it is.
Okay, Mr. Williams, okay, the motion, yes, all in favor, would you indicate by raising your hand? Uh, the vote is unanimous, Counselor, on the road, did you vote?
Yes, I think yes.
Okay, so it's approved, the vote is unanimous, thank you. Did you vote?
Oh, oh, yes, you did.
Yes, take it off, okay, alright. Approval of the minutes, I need, before you guys leave, we got a motion to approve the minutes for April 1st, April 4th, and April 6th. Are there any questions, or second, are there any questions?
I have a question, I was not provided with the actual minutes, I was a little unable to, you saying.
Yeah, that was my question, I think there, no, I don't, I don't have a copy of the minutes and neither does the.
Okay, the engineer's standing here.
The way, yes, council has moved this second.
It's moved a second.
And the discussion is that, the discussion is that we don't have a copy of the minutes. My other question would be, the four minutes that were approved, when will they be placed on the website, because we have about five or six sets that are still missing from the website, right this week, so we said, so, and then we, we haven't had the opportunity to review any of these, one, two, three. So we said, so, and then we, we haven't had the opportunity to review any of these, one, two, three minutes, because they were, they were missing from my work, they weren't in my package either. Did anyone else get them?